Um, well, you have me get one, I think. Welcome, everyone. Let me get in here. Whoop, I lost my spot. Welcome, everyone. We'll begin this evening with our organizational meeting and I'll, um, I'm calling the meeting to order. Um, we're going to start with a pledge of allegiance. Mr. Allen, could you please lead us?
(inaudible) to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We're going to be, um, item two is, um, we're going to start with reappointments and of our charter officials, we have the city assessor, clerk of council, city attorney, and acting clerk of council. Now, unless there's an objection, we'll do this by single motion. Is there a motion to re- um, reappoint the current officers? City assessor, Mary Han Barrier, clerk of council, Julia Bordle, city attorney will be Melissa Michelson of the firm Litton in sight, and acting clerk of council, Mike Camp. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short. And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Lee, I'll give you the second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, everyone's reappointed. Five to zero. Okay, that closes our organizational meeting. I call to order the January 8th regular business meeting of Waynesboro City Council. I'd like to welcome everyone and happy new year to you. If you wish to speak during the citizen comment period or the public hearing, please sign up on one of the sheets in the back of chambers. Item two is the adoption of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Mr. Wood, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda passes five to zero. Item three is matters from mayor. I don't have anything this evening. I'd like to move on to item four, which is matters from council members. Does anybody have anything they would like to share? Okay. Item five is consideration of the consent agenda. Has everyone had an opportunity to read over the consent agenda? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda pass, I mean, the, uh, consent agenda passes. Okay. Item six is can- to consider introducing an ordinance amending section 70 dash two of the city code regarding compensation to viewers for reports evaluating applications to close, vacate alleys, streets, avenues, or rights of way. Mr. Hamp?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor. Uh, the, um, the ordinance before you improves the situation for our viewers. The use of viewers is provided for and described in the city charter and section 2.6, uh, excuse me, section 2.6 of the city charter and compensation for viewers is provided for in city code section 70 dash 2A. Viewers fulfill an essential role in evaluating the applica- applications to close and/or vacate public streets, avenues, alleys, and rights of way. Originally, the code provided for compensation of $5 per viewer's report required by council. In 1986, the viewer's fee was increased to $10 per viewer's report. I've, uh, placed at your places at the dais and a reminder of what the viewer's report is. It's a rather simple, um, evaluation form, but when the council appoints viewers and assigns them to a task, uh, they return with, uh, the answers to those questions and any narrative notes that they have on their request. And essentially, it's the viewer's responsibility to assess and determine if there's any, uh, public inconvenience, um, created by the request or, um, if there's any damage that anybody, um, adjacent to the request would suffer. Uh, due to rising costs of gasoline and the increased complexity of requests and the inability to recruit viewers, the council has asked to consider adopting this ordinance, increasing the per viewer fee to $20 per viewer per vacation request. And then I would add, I don't think there's a, um, an expectation that this will fully improve our situation. I think it'll be incumbent upon Ms. Bordle and myself to beef up our recruitment efforts because our roster of eligible viewers has dwindled through the years. And so this is a, uh, start to that and then, um, Ms. Bordle and I will work up a campaign to recruit.
Okay, sounds good. Are there any questions? If anybody's interested in the viewer, um, position, please reach out to Ms. Julia Bordle.
Thank you. We need to, this evening, we'll need to introduce the work.
Okay. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? Okay, this will, ordinance will receive final consideration at the January 22nd meeting. Item seven is to receive a status report on the Nature's Crossing Technology Center project and consider adopting a resolution supporting a grant application to the Virginia Economic Development Partnership in the amount of $15,600,000 to support the installation of utilities. Is, I'd like to call on Greg Hitchens.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. I have for you two items tonight, a, um, and four very quick subjects. Marketing, a refresh of the retreat, um, almost a year ago, what our current status is, and then the grant application itself. On the marketing side, we've had a separate website, nature'scrossing.com for about five years now. That's a picture of the homepage. Has complete details of the park, possible layout, utilities, anything that, um, anyone might want to know on an initial visit, visit to the site. We continue to promote it through our quarterly newsletters, which I believe all of you get. We also promote it with our partners, Virginia Economic Development Partnership and the Shenandoah Valley Partnership. Um, all three of us have, share an online database of sites, which includes a lot of information about the site itself, as well as demographics, about the localities and radiuses around that site. Again, information that prospective companies or site consultants might want to have. Uh, we recently did a direct mail to 80 of the top site consultants in the country. Uh, the email received a 17% open and click-through rate and the actual direct mail piece through the post office, um, had a 33% web visit. So they actually typed in the web address to get more information. So both of those are, uh, are pretty, pretty good, um, open rates for us. We're pretty excited about that. And we have continued to have one-on-one meetings and have more one-on-one meetings scheduled, uh, for the year. Uh, this chart we showed at the retreat, it outlined all of the projects to get, um, our site up to a tier four site, which is our goal to achieve at the conclusion of when the Southern Corridor Road is complete. We're going to come back to this chart, um, in one second. I wanted Mr. Hamp, uh, to just briefly review some of the financial obligations. Again, you saw this chart, or a version of this chart, um, at the retreat.
So, um, we, we have contemplated sort of best case, worst case, and middle-of-the-road scenarios. I think the worst-case scenario would be that, um, in the event that we get no new or additional grants, the local effort required would be $16 million to complete the project. And when I say project, I'm referring exclusively to onsite and off-site, um, utilities and primarily off-site utilities at this point. Debt service for that amount would be $1.3 million. Uh, we have two illustrations there. Nine pennies would be required on the tax, on the real estate tax rate if, uh, we include the schools in that distribution. Uh, we have talked about this and your staff would recommend, and I think, um, if my understanding is correct, I perhaps would want to understand if I'm incorrect, that, uh, we're in agreement that we would exclude the tax or the real estate tax increase associated with the debt service here from the formula. In such a case, only five pennies would be required to satisfy the worst-case scenario. And of that five pennies, uh, we've, the council approved a two-cent increase in the current budget, and so that would leave three pennies remaining to increase to satisfy the debt service. Now, having said that, um, again, that's the worst-case scenario expectation. I think realistically, we, um, expect something, um, not, something better than the worst case, but something not as good as the best case. And so we're planning for a middle-of-the-road type outcome. Having said that, I think depending on the timing of, um, cash accumulation and when the work, um, is undertaken, it could be that we would be, um, not contemplating a borrowing until the spring or fall of 2025. Um, prior to that, we would bring a reimbursement resolution to the council that would allow, um, the city to reimburse itself from debt proceeds, um, in the event that we issue debt for expenses that we incur prior to that debt issuance. So, again, this, this slide primarily illustrates, um, what would be regarded as the worst-case scenario, which we don't believe will be the case, and then highlights the difference between including, um, those pennies, um, needed to satisfy the debt service, whether you include them in the school funding formula or do not. Um, again, I would recommend that you don't. And, um, we've made significant progress, um, to raising the funds to satisfy the debt. This likely will be a topic at our retreat on February 9th under the CIP section, but, um, as a companion to Greg's information tonight, we wanted to give you an update again on the sort of financial program that we have in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. Just as a reminder, there are six pieces of this puzzle, um, to come together. Um, the first is the, of course, the Southern Corridor Road, which is a VDOT project, and all the funds for that have been completely obligated, and it is expected to be completed in May of 2025. Second piece is the onsite water. Um, we received a grant for that of roughly $2 million, uh, a year ago, and that work is ongoing. Also, the onsite sewer, um, also roughly $2 million, which we received a grant a year ago, and that work, um, is working to get that all done. The pieces remaining is a, um, water tank at $4.8 million, a off-site delivery capacity system. So we need to get more capacity of sewer to the park. Uh, that's $5.6 million, includes the pipe and a pump station and the off-site delivery capacity for water. Again, that's $5.2 million. So we updated the chart that we showed you at the last retreat with those new numbers, and those numbers are from just a week or so ago. So the total, uh, again, worst-case scenario is $15.6 million. We've already received roughly $4 million, um, towards, um, not part of that, but towards, towards the project. Again, the goal is to be a tier four site, um, following the guidelines of Virginia Economic Development Partnership when the road is completed. So we want that, that we would need the onsite utilities to be completed at roughly the same time the road is done, and a plan for the off-site delivery utilities to be completed 12 to 18 months after that. We also have, um, so this just kind of illustrates that. The grant that we're applying for, we are going to ask for the entire $15.6 million. It does require a 25% match, but we are allowed to utilize funds already spent within the past five years and/or committed. So that adds up to $3 million, um, for off, off of a match, total match of 3.9. So tonight's resolution in a moment will be, um, to offer, to commit to a match of roughly $900,000 for this, uh, for $15.6 million with the work. We've also identified, um, three other possible grant opportunities. Now, these are federal grants, which means any state money that we have can be used as a match towards the federal grant and vice versa. So expect to see me back here in, uh, 60 days or so, um, asking for a match for the top two of these. So the first one is onsite water system. So that will be the pipes and the water tank, which is, um, roughly, roughly $9 million, and also the off-site engineering, which would be step one. Once you get the off-site engineering done, then we could apply for the third grant that's listed up there for the off-site construction. So tonight, uh, we're asking for a resolution authorizing the city manager to confirm the match. Again, $900,000. This is due on Thursday, so we're busy putting that all together, um, as we speak. And if awarded, uh, we would know during the summer of 2024, this summer. Happy to address any questions.
Are there any questions?
No. Okay.
All right. Thank you, Greg. Okay, is there a motion to adopt the resolution supporting the grant application to the EDP?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Is there a second?
I'm second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion?
Just a question maybe from Mr. Hamp is, um, the 900,000, um, if we were successful and assuming that, um, those funds were to become available, um, as early as, as the summertime, um, how would that impact the conversation in the upcoming budget discussion and implications to debt service on the 900,000? Or would we pay that cash on hand?
We would, um, so Cameron could furnish a, a better answer, I think, or a more confident answer. But in my conversations with him, um, you'll raise approximately 550 or so with the two cents. That was headed toward reserve for debt service with this budget, and then the, an equivalent amount or perhaps more in the next budget. So we feel like it would, a worst-case scenario, we would fund it with that cash raised with the, those, the increase that's already occurred.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes five to zero. Item eight is to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2024 budget in the amount of $5,368,781. I'm going to call on Mr. Hamp.
Yes, ma'am. So, um, this, uh, budget amendment crosses over several different funds. In the general fund, uh, there's an amendment in the value of $518,738, uh, the bulk of which is, um, occurring in, um, public safety, uh, departments. There's a grant for, um, you may recall, um, you adopted a resolution some time ago applying for a grant that would fund, uh, new police vehicles and breaching kits in the police department. We were successful in receiving that grant, and this appropriates those grant funds. Also, um, the staff was successful in applying for a, um, Virginia Department of Emergency Management grant that's intended to improve recruitment retention for E911 dispatchers. Like, um, most public safety disciplines, uh, localities are having a challenge recruiting and retaining dispatchers, and this, uh, grant provides that we can, um, furnish full-time and part-time employees in our 911 center, um, a retention bonus. Uh, there's also, um, some money in there for some work that needs to occur at the landfill. Uh, in the CAPSO fund, $19,950, that's a grant from Virginia Housing. Uh, the CAPSO is, uh, undertaking a housing study in the region. And then in the Office on Youth, uh, we're increasing, uh, that fund by $126,000, roughly $127,000. $86,000 of which is a grant for truancy programming that, um, Office on Youth is undertaking in partnership with the schools. $40,000 is appropriated to replace, I think, two vehicles with used vehicles. That fund balance is created, um, not only with Waynesboro dollars, but also Stanton and Augusta County dollars. So we're not bearing the full burden of, um, of that responsibility. It's a regional office and, uh, those expenses are incurred and shared regionally. Um, the Stormwater Fund is increasing, um, by $502,000. This money will, um, fund a stormwater project in the Hopeman Station neighborhood. You may recall, the city acquired a piece of property in the Hopeman Station neighborhood, and, uh, this is a project that, um, addresses our TMDL, our Totally Maximum Daily Load requirements under our MS4 permit. And so this is a water quality project, and that's a $251,000 grant with a dollar-for-dollar match. So $251,000 from the grant and $251,000 from fund balance in the Stormwater Fund. And then the bulk of the appropriation occurs in the school fund, um, and that's a variety of, uh, revenue sources, including grants and additional appropriation from the state. That when the school board, you may recall, adopted their local budget, this, the state had not concluded their, um, work on the state budget, and the school division realized additional revenue that is now being appropriated as part of their budget, that they, um, that was furnished when the state finally adopted a budget. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, to the best of my ability.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hamp?
Just, uh, one thought, Mike, maybe in the, if you wouldn't mind, maybe for the future for the school funds, if you could include the minutes from the school board meeting, just so we can kind of appreciation for what the grants were that were received.
Yes, sir. Um, yeah, we can do that. And, um, so this is a two-consideration ordinance. We'll come back when we get to the next meeting with some clear-
Awesome. Yeah, thank you. Just curiosity, just to celebrate with them. Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Any more questions?
No.
I hereby open the public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, ma'am. Nobody signed up to speak at the public hearing.
Okay. I hereby close the public hearing. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? Okay. This ordinance will receive final consideration at the January 22nd meeting. Item nine is to consider appointing an individual to the Planning Commission for the unexpired four-year term ending August 31st, 2024. Is there a motion to appoint Jeremy Sloot for that?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Mr. Wood, is there a second?
A second.
And thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, five to zero. Uh, congratulations, Jeremy, and we do appreciate your willingness to, um, serve. Item 10 is communication, correspondence, and calendar and comments from our city manager, Mr. Hamp.
Yes, ma'am. I have two very brief, um, items of calendar. A reminder that this Thursday, January 11th at 4:00 PM, we'll have a work session here in council chambers, and that work session will focus on, um, housing. And then on February 9th, um, beginning at 8:30, we'll have our annual, uh, retreat that will be general in nature, but, um, aimed at, uh, getting some clarity and direction from council on the budget.
Thank you. Item 11 is citizens' comment period. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Um, yes, ma'am. And I'm, I'm struggling to read this name. Robert M. West?
Wirt.
Wirt, okay.
You could just state your name and your address for our public records. We'd appreciate-
My name is Robert Wirt, 1015 South Winchester Avenue. I'm a '94 wounded Marine Korean War. Didn't come here for that. Came here to see what council, who's responsible for that mess on, on Woodrow Wilson, Woodrow Wood Road, railroad crossing. I've had my car front-end alignment crossing that stupid railroad crossing. And I was wondering who was responsible, city council or Norfolk and Southern. It's been like that for two years or better. And I know a thousand or more cars cross that highway, that road every day. I'm surprised more people have complained with the car being, with, with problems in the car, but I'll leave it to the council, the mayor. Thank you for acknowledging me and your council also. This is my first visit to city council. Um, I was wounded in Korea and I'm hard of hearing, and all this is, is a mess just when I hear everybody. So I'm, I'm trying to hear everybody, to hear, so, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Greg.
Yes, good evening. My name's Tony Everett. I live at 438 Cedar Avenue. Uh, I'm a business owner and a resident. I love the city of Waynesboro. Um, I have a couple issues I'd like to mention. Uh, the new museum, um, told it's going to be at the Constitution Park area. Um, on Broad Street, there's a huge shopping center that is very unutilized. Um, the roses, the advanced auto, Osiris pizza would have to move, but it's more than enough space there, uh, to build a museum and a parking garage. Um, that way you wouldn't have to interfere with any of our green space or the event parking downtown. Plus, it would clean up, uh, a rundown area. Um, I asked that y'all consider that. Um, we also like the Groovin' on the Greenway. Um, very nice to be able to go down and see that. Um, also, I'd like to bring up the water and sewer cost in the city. I understand you'll have high expenses, um, but small businesses that roll out water have a hard time maintaining profitability. Um, I asked they would y'all consider possibly giving a discount or a different pricing structure for laundromats, car washes, and pressure washers, or any business that water is their main business. Um, little guys need a break. Um, the only other thing I'd like to add is, please be conservative in developing, and please don't overdevelop. I spent 25 years in Charlottesville. I wouldn't want to live there now. Everybody's on top of everybody. Um, some of the businesses coming in, we don't have the infrastructure to support. And there's also a lot of businesses that are vacant, um, that could be knocked down and new, uh, new businesses put there. So I said, this guy wants 15.6 million for a fancy industrial park. I think we should reutilize what we already have and try to keep some of these people from out of town on that bay. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. That's all? Okay. Item 12 is a closed session as requested by the city manager. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I moved to recess into a closed meeting in order to discuss the relocation or expansion of business or industry that has indicated an interest in relocating to or expanding operations within the city and where no previous announcement has been made as authorized by section 2.2 dash 3, 711A 5 of the Virginia Code.
Okay, thank you for that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? Okay, this requires a roll call vote. Ms. Bordle?
David Williams?
Aye.
Vice President Short?
Who?
Congratulations on the motion.
De-motion.
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Uh.
Councilman Short?
Aye.
Councilman Lee?
Aye.
Okay. We're in closed session.
Did you just get reappointed?
Thank-